Okay, we'll get started with the work session today, so it's a little after one. Michael, we'll start with you on pursuing a grant for the Summer Trail Master Plan.
There we go. Yeah, so the reason I'm before the commission today is we're working on finalizing a Summer Trail Master Plan that we want to get in front of the commission probably by the May 2nd meeting for review and recommendation for adoption. This is a three-phase approach to improving trails and adding additional trails on the mountain, some entry-level trails connecting campgrounds, some trails for more technical riding. There's an outdoor rec grant application available. Up until yesterday, I thought the deadline was early June. It's my understanding now it's not until July, so some of what I'm coming in front of you guys about is probably muted, probably be included in my, in the budget cycle. The outdoor rec grant typically requires a minimum 10% match, and to do all three phases is around $830,000, so we're looking at $83,000 for a match, which I do not have in my budget at this time. Right before this meeting, I received a call, and I learned that Central Wyoming Trail Alliance may be willing to pay Angela Emery to prepare and write the grant, but I think that's the extent of their pursuit. They're very interested in getting this adopted and getting it implemented on the ground, as well as some other people in the citizen, in the community. So basically, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a problem if I pursue this grant application while we are still finalizing, getting a recommendation to the commission for adoption of the master plan. And that's kind of the extent of that deal. With the July deadline, I think we could probably work in the budget to see if there's funding to do the match. And I can break down, there's three phases in this plan. The first phase was estimated about 100 grand, the second phase was 250 grand, and the third phase was 480 grand. So, you know, there could be definitely discussion that, let's not do the whole thing, let's do Phase 1 to start, those types of things. But Central Wyoming Trail Alliance and other people in the community are, they're knocking on my door about this quite a bit. This would not be my top priority project in the parks, in all of our parks, to get this done over, over maybe some other things like improving campgrounds, or improvement at Hell's Half Acre, or things like that, so. But I just wanted to make sure that I'm good to go to pursue this grant, and possibly bring in a, a grant writer to assist Angela Emery. She was at Flat River Trails, supposed to have a discussion with her at the end of the month to see what her consultation fees would be for a grant, so at that time, I'll have an understanding of what the cost may be to have her assist the department and the Parks Board in, in preparing a grant.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Did I hear you to say that you, you want both Four Hills, Half Acre, and the other trails?
Yeah, I'd like to pursue grant applications for both projects, and we were denied our last project we submitted, which was for the additional shelters at Bear Trap and improvements to our campgrounds. And so I'd like to actually pursue all three and file three separate grant applications.
Why'd they turn that down?
I'm not sure. I haven't got a, a clear answer on that. One recommend-
Seems like a pretty project.
Yeah, one, one thing was, it's not as, trails were in it might be one. I did not present it to the Outdoor Rec Collaborative to get their thumbs up, but I was also told that it was not necessary for the application to, to continue through, so short timeline, put it together very quickly, probably two weeks.
So the public wants this Summer Trail Master Plan, don't they?
A few of the public do, yes. I've spoken with two individuals on it.
So what kind of money would you be asking for in each one of these?
Well, for the Summer Trail Master Plan, it's, the grants require 10% match minimum. So if you're gonna do the entire Summer Trail Plan, you're looking at $83,000. If you do Phase 1, you're looking at $10,000. So anywhere between 10 and 83 is what?
83 would be our 10%, or that's the total cost?
Yeah, to do all three phases is $830,000.
Oh. It's always nice to hear the full number. How about for Hell's Half Acre?
My estimate there, and it's real rough, is 130 to 150,000 dollars for the entire project.
And we can make money on that, can't we?
Uh, it was not, that's not my intention, because it would be day use only. Allow people to go out and picnic, allow people to access pedestrian-only down into the bottom, but it would require some improvements to the, the roadways, to the picnic shelters, and a cattle guard, a pedestrian, auto gate, a couple of things like that, some redo of fencing and grading and gravel.
Years ago, they used to have a gift shop and a place to get a burger and stuff there, didn't they?
Yeah.
That's been torn down?
Yes. Yeah, the foundation's the only thing left, and that would be torn down with the re, torn out with the regrading.
Thank you.
Do you have something else you wanted to present, or?
No, no, I mean, that's the most of it. I just want to make sure I'm okay on pursuing these grants, and, and we can revisit this probably towards late May and see where we're at, 'cause they're due in July.
Jim?
Yeah. City just asked for a grant the other day. I don't know if she got ahold of you from the rec board, school rec board?
Yeah, so Zulima's planning a Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Right.
And the city's definitely gonna do, but we had a meeting, Evansville Mills, Barnum, City Casper, and the Toronto County to see about being involved with that share. And I, I have an email, I don't recall what, she kind of broke it down, share-wise, it was, the county would probably be in the 15 to 30,000 dollar range to include, make it a regional plan, and, and that way we can look at it as, are we overloaded as a region for this type of park, or this type of facility?
Right, looking at it holistically, but I'm going specifically to what you're doing now. Maybe it behooves to have you go through that grant process as well.
Oh.
For this specific project?
For the state land board?
Not, for the, for the rec board.
Okay.
With the school district, the county rec board?
Yeah, I could, I could pursue that as well as the state-
Dollar's a dollar, right?
Yeah, state outdoor rec, yeah. So the state outdoor rec department has, I think, I thought it was 12 million, but I think they got an additional 12. So, so there, there's 24 million there, and then, I'm not sure what the, the rec board has, but yeah, I could pursue that as well.
Yeah.
The only other update, if you need a quick update, is Biathlon Nationals is starting, they'll have training Thursday, race is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The groomings, we've done a really good job, we've had some breakdowns with our equipment, but I think we've got those all solved. We've been fighting a couple of electrical things all season long, but the grooming's in pretty good shape, and the event's gonna go on, so we'll see, see how it turns out.
Okay. Well, as far as the grants go, I, I do want to have a little further conversation on, on the grants itself. We have, so I, I sent you an email, and I just read your response back on the kiosk grant.
Correct.
But we have that one that needs reporting. We have the grant, the, I just talked to the treasurer's office two days ago in discussions about several grants that, that we have right now that need reporting on them, and that was done by a person that's no longer with us. And so, and we've got some reporting that's gonna need to be done on some grants that are coming, and I, I don't know that we really have a person in place to, to be doing the reporting. And another gap that we have in the process that I think you just identified is that you're wanting to bring somebody in to help you write that grant. So I would like to have that discussion as far as looking at putting somebody in place here that would handle all grant applications and reporting. I think that's the smartest thing to do, and to find somebody that is, that has that background in that. So I would like that to be a further discussion sooner than later, if we could. So, okay.
Yeah, it was just a recent understanding that, that we do have an opportunity to use Angela, and with CWA talking about paying for her to, to help with the Summer Trail Master Plan, and literally that was 10 minutes before this meeting, I was under the assumption that my department, along with assistants from the Parks Board, would be preparing these grants, but any additional help in writing grants, I'm all in favor of, for sure.
I just have a question. Did Angela agree to do this?
No, she reached out, she's starting up, once she retires on the 31st, she's gonna, I'm gonna have a meeting with her, and we're just gonna have a discussion to see if it's a viable option for the Parks Department or not to, to assist with our grants.
I think, I think she's really a good person, and I would recommend that we pursue that.
So, yeah, I, I need to find out what, what the funding model is, what the cost is, and, and if it's a viable option to, for the Parks Department to use, and that'll be a discussion I bring in front of the commission, once I know more information from her.
Sounds good to me.
I guess just take that a step further, though. I mean, it, it, it's great for a stopgap measure that somebody's willing to do it, to plug them in, but I think we need to be looking at an overall position that is filled by somebody, and, and you and I have had that discussion as far as when we talk about project management on some of these projects that are taking place. This is another time that I think that when we are applying for grants, and then you have to report on these grants, I mean, each section that has a grant has a job to do, a full-time job to do, and to keep throwing something on there that could be handled by one person across the county, it's for every grant, just makes more sense to me than burdening people down to say, okay, now you gotta take time out of your day and go report. And, and frankly, what I've seen a lot of here lately is, we're behind on reporting.
Right.
You know? We have one that, that will get reported on right away, but I've got another grant that we're several months, several, well, quarters behind. And, and I, and I think it is a, that one is just, the process is, it's gone through, the paperwork's lost somewhere in there, and, and that'll be taken care of, but it's being done by people that don't do grants and don't understand the process, so that's why I come back to, it's nice to plug somebody in to help out, but we need somebody that knows what they're doing full-time.
Which was what I was thinking. We need somebody to help us out. Let me ask you, who, who are you referring to that used to do them that's not here now? Is that Eric?
Well, yeah, I mean, Eric has, has been handling a lot of those grants, so.
Well, you know, we've talked about this, maybe I'll just tickle your brain with it again. It's always been my thought to have some sort of a county administrator. I used to say county manager, nobody like that, but somebody that, that did coordinate all that, and with what I've seen lately about being behind on some of this stuff, and what, what the treasurer has told us, we can't have that continue, and we really, and you're right, Mr. Chairman, we need to hire somebody, and I think we ought to look at a person that's not in the, in the attorney's office doing this. I, I don't, I don't want to see the attorneys being saddled with this, because I think that contributed to some former problems. So I'm just using the word county administrator, just because I haven't thought about a different sort of name for this, or project manager, I know that's been used, but that, that might be a difficult position to fill. So I'm just suggesting that, 'cause I know you thought about, I know everybody's kind of thought about it, and maybe now is the time to, to turn up the speedometer and get it done.
Well, and Chairman Frill, on that LWCF grant, I did have assistance, I think her name was Ashley, she was a consultant that-
Ashley Beddoesh?
Yeah. She assisted on that.
Okay.
So, and she was quite a bit of help, too. There's still a lot of information collection that's, kind of comes from the department on those things, but yeah, on, on the formatting and, and what's required, she was big assistance on that.
Yeah, so Ashley was, I was gonna say, or ask if you'd thought about using her as well.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if she was still under contract, or, or how that works, so I am-
I'm not sure if she is still, or with that grant that you're talking about right now. I think that was more, she was more specific, but it'd be worth maybe talking to her, see if she is still contracted for that.
Right. We're currently talking to her about some other stuff.
Okay.
So I, I think as far as locating grants and helping us get down that road, but after the fact, we still have the, the reporting that needs to be done, and that seems to be where we're falling short. And again, I'll come back and say it again, as far as like the county administrator, I don't know that we need administrator, but we definitely need to have somebody working grants that, that does reporting on them, and goes out and finds them. But, and, and then on the other side of things, we've got a lot of projects going on in the county right now, and it would be really who of us to have somebody, project manager is a good way of saying it, to, to put in charge of all these. We got a health department that's getting built, you've got several projects going on out in the county right now that-
Yeah, I've got a campground, a lodge, a shelter, and then looking at adding a couple more.
And I know your background, and we've talked about it, and I know that, that, you know, it's right in your wheelhouse, but at the same time, we also need you to run the Parks Department, and I can't have you running the Parks Department, building, being a manager over the top of buildings being done, be a grant writer, a grant reporter. Before you know it, you get too busy, I gotta get a second one of you. So I'd rather find, you know, see where's the best fit, the, the best position that we can have, that we can plug people in to take care of those things, and allow our, allow our department heads to be department heads and run their sections.
As far as the grants go, what you're talking about, you probably saw Tom's mention of in the past, we had somebody kind of watching that stuff. I think, I think that would be the best office to have it in, because then they, they're in the treasury office, they have access to those systems and files and da-da-da-da-da, and they can break it out and report it and everything like that. I think we should talk to, maybe talk to Tom and, and see if he would be interested in bringing on somebody to, through, through the treasurer, county treasurer's office to do that, for the, for the grant reporting, finding, and all that tracking like that.
Yeah.
The projects manager, though, I agree with you, though, that would be nice, as long as we don't leave the department heads out of the plan completely.
Sure. Yeah, they need to be a part of it, obviously, it's their section, and they should know the overall of it. Tom is the one that actually suggested the grant writer, so maybe we just need to have that discussion with him to see if, if it fits better there.
So, the only thing I would add to this, I agree with, with this, but the only thing I would add is, I hope Mr. Chairman, you do it right away, 'cause we're, we're behind in the race on some of this stuff, and I don't, you know, I don't know about the, the grant, how, is that a full-time job? If it is, we need to get somebody, whether it's at the treasurer here, and the project manager calling it that, I'm okay with calling it that, I, I guess that's kind of what it would be. Would that be a separate entity, like, the, like, the director's job for the parks and all that, would he be in, in that status?
I don't know, that's something that we just need to have as a topic and have a discussion about it, because, I mean, we're about to talk about the health department trying to, to get, you know, get that off the ground and running, and, and we're running in stumbling blocks along the way.
And that, that's just gonna be a job, getting it off the ground and getting it running, and getting up to date with whatever federal paperwork we have and all of that kind of thing.
As far as a grant writer, hold on just a second, Dave. As far as grant writer goes, if we get a good grant writer, they pay for themselves by the grants they bring in.
Right.
The, the control they have over that, so there's, I don't think there's any problem with getting somebody come in and, and want to oversee the grants, to find and write the grants. They're, they're worth their weight in gold.
Do they get a percentage of it, is that what they get?
No, you, you pay, pay them just whatever, right? A normal salary.
Yeah, I don't know how it works.
But finding a good grant writer, you're gonna be paying a little bit more than what you're thinking.
Yeah.
But they are, they're worth their weight in gold. Go ahead, Dave.
Thanks. Listening to this, I, I think we're talking about two totally different things. I do agree that we, a good grant writer is something that would pay for itself in a hurry, especially with all the grants that we have out there, but I do think that with the treasurer's department, that would be the place, because we've got so many grants out there right now, that we need to keep tabs on, and make sure that we've got all the paperwork filled out and taken care of. I, I do think that that's something that we need to look at, to make sure that we, we stay on top of that, so we don't get ourselves in trouble with all the ARPA funding and everything else.
Good.
Do we need some official authorization to hire a project manager?
Yeah, well, we need to obviously get the background done and figure out what it's gonna cost, we can't, as much said, love to hire somebody today.
Get a job description?
Yeah, I'm good with HR, get it all figured out.
You haven't, you haven't people in mind?
I don't. That's a discussion we just have to have another time.
Are you, y'all done with me?
I am. Do you have anything else, Ted?
Yeah, I got a 2:00 on the mountain for the lodge.
Let me know when you, let me know when you get those trailers out down there at the trailer court, because-
I will.
Our people want them moved, and it's really nice news for you to tell me you're gonna do that.
Yep, I will.
All right, thanks.
I won't be up there. Okay, we're gonna move on to commissioners' discussion, and there's actually two items that we have on here. We want to discuss funding for, through the, oh, actually, Anna's here from the Health Department, to answer any questions we have pertaining to the Wyoming Department of Health and Wyoming Gaming Commission's funds that they have. And then I also want to have a quick discussion, you should've got some last-minute information on employing Lisa Hubbard to assist on a RFQ for the Health Department, but I want to have that discussion across the board on how we want to handle that. So if we can start, start off with Health Department, Anna, do you want to give us a brief on it, on the gambling?
Thank you. Basically, the gambling came across, it is in the community prevention realm of what they're having conversations at the state level, so the program that you get direct funding in regards to the community prevention, the gambling would fit into that category. There's a lot of information that is still being gathered, so we're kind of at the very beginning, so if you're interested in pursuing it, then we just need to let the state know that. Just some real preliminary brainstorming, because there's no data out there that shows anything, would be kind of finding out what's going on, doing a lot of PSAs, support, different things like that, see if there's providers in the community that would be able to address this. So, because it is the 81,000, I don't know how long that goes, I know we have it for two years. It may go up if other counties choose not to do it, we know that Sheridan is really considering not pursuing it, so then that could increase the funding that we would get for that. But at this point, there's a lot of unknowns, but I think that it would be beneficial to at least try to figure out if we have something that we need to address, provide some support in the community for it, if it's into that community prevention realm, and the state is still getting a lot of information out to us. So we know as much as you know, but I would be interested in, like, perhaps accepting it and see what we can do for at least two years. We, we're leery to hire a person to run it, if it's only for two years. The sustainability and all those kinds of things that go in with that are a little concerning, but we don't know what that other side of two years looks like.
So I'd, I'd say we take it. If Sheridan doesn't want it, I'd like to get theirs. I mean, they send their people down to here, that's, you know, it increases our homeless, our, gambling's just another addictive type nature, behavior, and it follows along with drug use, alcohol use, da-da-da-da-da, all that different piece there. So holistically, we should have this type of program here to deal with all the, the influx of people that the rest of the state sent in us.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Dallas.
I support the program. I've dealt with it recently, and, let's see, what can I say about it? It's a person that has really not much money, spent an ungodly amount of money that belonged to an underage person, no way to get it back. And it's the saddest thing I've ever seen. And then I find out it's happened multiple times. So I'm trying to get the Attorney General to fix the little problem they have as to how this money's being handled. We did get this other one finally fixed, but, boy, it's a sad thing to see it, 'cause it's worse, it's truly, in a way, it's worse than the drinking and everything, 'cause the drinking goes in hand with it, but when you're, I'm, I'm for it, is all I'm saying.
Thank you. And I think the resources that are attached on there are evidence-based, and we would look into those to see, like, how they would work. There's an employee at the Wyoming Department of Health that worked in Iowa, who's spent a lot of time in this area, providing these resources, so it's like finding what would work best for our community. I don't know how much, like, you provided some really good examples, like, how far does that go in our community? 'Cause I think there's a lot of opportunities, so getting that information, I think, would be helpful.
I'm assuming these numbers are all based off of per capita?
Mm-hmm.
Or population itself? 'Cause I noticed Fremont County is just barely at $40,000, and they have, like, legal, legal gambling over there, where I think that more of that money should obviously be going to, doesn't mean that people aren't gonna travel from, you know, Carbon County and go up there and, and gamble. But then also looking at this list, I would assume that, I mean, a lot of these, a lot of the counties don't have any form of gambling in them at all, so if they elect not to participate, then that, that funding just gets dulled out amongst those that do, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Well, I agree, I think we should move forward, just 'cause we may not see a big gambling problem right now, obviously, our community has quite a few establishments that have opened up, and we may see it here in the near, near future, maybe we won't, but it would be good to have funding in place to take care of that, if-
Yeah, the reason I know about these things are where, where there's a guardian for the child, and once a year, they have to file a report, and then the court sees that. And then that's where you dig deeper, and you see what's happening. I can, could go into it in detail, but I don't know if that's a good idea right here.
No.
'Cause I don't want to explain to anybody how to do it, quite frankly.
Very much respect.
And, so, it's out there, Mr. Chairman, and it's a bad news deal.
Okay.
'Cause some little kids are paying for it.
Okay, so I guess we'll move forward on that. So let's switch gears, the RFP, RFQ scope of work. It's my understanding that, so Lisa Hubbard is from G, she's no longer with them, GSG Architecture, she has said that she would be a consultant, it's, I think, $1,200, a consultant to help get the RFQ put together. There's cer, several different approaches to building out, building like the Health Department, I think we're looking at the, or she's recommending design, bid, and bill, correct? So the question being is, do we want to move forward in- Um, so the question being is, do we want to move forward in hiring her on as a consultant? The question I would have is, I see you reaching for your button. So you're going to answer the question I have is, um, can we just hire her on or does that have to go through a bid process to have her come on board and help us finalize this RFQ process?
So when I saw the email, I checked our, our levels and she's under the level that we have to bid. So if, if the board wants to hire her, they, they don't have to publish or, or request other, um, bids for it. So you could do that tonight. What I would suggest is I could put a contract together based on what she sent us and have that ready for you tonight, if, if that's where you're leaning.
Okay. And the recommendation from the meeting that, that has been held and Commissioner Nicolason's been a part of that and his recommendation is that we would move forward, uh, with her. Um, so I guess discussion on it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. Well, how much was it again? What's the total cost of it?
$1,200.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Nicolason recommended it and that's good enough for me.
Dave, are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify. Um, was it the, the bid design build that she recommended? I thought it was the bid. Design bid build she recommends. The traditional one? Yes. Okay. In order for more competition at the architect level as well as at the construction level. Um, I think it would serve us best on both.
And she's obviously been down the, she's been down the road numerous times in her professional career on helping us get to where we need to go. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. I'll have that ready for you guys.
Okay.
Perfect.
Need anything else?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
That was easy.
I know. Wow.
You got me way ahead of schedule now.
Huh?
You got me way ahead of schedule now.
I was trying to make it.
So how's everything else going for you?
Busy. So busy. Um, well, there's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of, um, opportunities, um, that are being presented. The con, the grant portion of what you're talking about, I can tell you, um, and I know Charmaine's been involved in it and Nick is involved in it because we have two ARPA grants or we have the federal earmark that I'm involved with and the ARPA of our site. And that would be the perfect example of why that would be helpful. Um, because I can go out and find the grants, but if it's a county's grant, I don't feel comfortable being the one that is talking about it much like this building. So I would recommend something along those lines, um, because I think we could also find other grant opportunities and funding opportunities. Um, just really busy getting ready to kind of figure out what we need for funding. Um, lots of babies being born, so maternal child health continues to be very busy. Um, we haven't seen the numbers in our clinic returns since COVID. Um, that's a little concerning. Um, we're wondering, you know, where people are accessing services. Um, so we're working really proactively to try to figure that out. Um, environmental health is getting ready for all the additional stuff that they do. It's just going a mile a minute as usual and add this into it. It's going to be a interesting time.
Could you give me a little information? Do we have any programs for suicide prevention?
Yes, we do. So we have the community prevention program, which is actually, um, the funding comes through the county and it is given to us. So what we have is, um, Haley Bloom is our administrator of that grant and we focus on suicide prevention, but we, um, have an RFP process that we give to, for example Mercer, who then provides the education and the support. So everything has to be evidence-based. So we're not directly doing it, but we're supporting people in the community to work on that.
Do they, uh, Commissioners probably hate to ask that, this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do they need more money to make it more effective?
Um.
Cause I read all about what happened at legislature and that kind of thing and that wasn't a positive for me.
It is not a positive.
Especially when you, when you've been, you know, you know, several real life incidences there. Can't even believe how hard that is on people.
Absolutely. Um, I think that, you know, funding is always an issue that we have. Um, getting the resources to the right places, I think is critical. We right now have kind of a situation in the community for mental health providers.
Yes, we do.
Uh, the Behavioral Intercept Model or the SIMS Model is agencies all across the city and the county coming together. We leave everything at the door and we come in and we're working on crisis intervention, trying to help, um, individuals. If one thing could make a difference, try to give them that one thing, whatever that is. So we're working very hard with, um, at least 20 agencies in the community. Um, we'll be reaching out to you all so you can learn about what it is that we've been doing and see if there's funding available. There are grant, uh, grant opportunities. Right now we're working with, um, Y-SOC to get data to put behind all of the things that we're seeing, um, because we do see a, a significant number of, um, people who do, um, commit suicide and it's across all ages and demographics, everything. So really trying to figure out the data so that we can stand behind, where is the gaps? What are we missing? So, um, we are working on that and looking at those areas, but funding is always, because you can only go so far with what you have, right?
So I'm going to mention something that's graphic because it bothers me. This didn't happen to me personally. But a few years back, they, they hadn't heard from their son. And they went over to his house and they went in the garage and he was hanging. And I always felt that if more people in this community got behind that, we might have saved somebody.
Absolutely. That is a very, very unfortunately realistic situation that we should be able to get ahead of it. Um.
People were never the same?
No.
Never?
No, they never will be. Um, I think the funding at the legislative level with the Suicide Hotline, um, basically this group is just picking up Natrona County because we know that at the bigger level, things aren't happening. So we're trying to figure it out from Natrona County. We'll try to, we're the ones that will do things for the state because of situations like that. We recognize that's happening in our community. What can we do to fix it if the bigger entities can't help us?
Are you in touch with WBI at all?
Mm-hmm.
Did you know they lost some of their funding?
I did not know they lost some of their funding.
Well, Banner shut them off for a million and a half that they were getting from the Wyoming Medical Center. And, uh, it's explained to me by the CEO of Banner, now the new CEO, that they quit paying that money because WBI is a for-profit corporation. That's what they said. And of course, everyone knows that. And Banner is a, um, not-for-profit. But that, um, for the kind of people that we have to take care of when Sheriff's Department, Police Department take them over to WBI, this is, this is going to have reverberations clear down the line. And I, I don't know what to do about it. That's a lot of money.
Well, additionally, the state hospital is not able to take anything. So that is like a stop, um, right there. There's just this vicious circle that exists with the community, um, Central Wyoming Counseling Center, WBI and Banner. Um, and we're looking at transport. So police and those individuals can only take the person to the hospital. So then the hospital gets backed up and then it filters out. It, that whole system is.
It's, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a train wreck and it could get worse if we don't kind of take a pretty good look at it and see how we can solve the problem. Because I know that, uh, the Child Crisis Center, they have one whole wing that they can't open because it isn't done. They want us to, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think when they came here, they were asking us for about 135,000. I'm hoping we can, Commissioners can take a real strong look at that because that's, you go up there and you see those children and they're not at fault. They're not at fault at all. And, um, I'm in one of those moods today, you know? Because if we can't help children, who can we help?
And then if we, you know, fentanyl is in the community at a pretty significant rate. If we don't get a handle on things, it will continue to go. And children are definitely the place to start. Lots of, I don't know what all the magic answers are, but I think we need to look for them.
Well, I'm glad you're up there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I just wanted to add, since our office does the involuntary hospitalizations for the county, um, one of, one of the things that frustrates and saddens me is the number of, of minors that we get. I've had kids as young as maybe eight. And one of the biggest frustrations is that the burden for an involuntary hospitalization case is the person has to be currently a danger to themselves. Others will leave it there for the children. Um, whereas if DFS gets involved, which you know, sometimes it can, sometimes it doesn't apply, but it seems like often something, something's going on in the background. Um, DFS gets to look for the best interest of the child. And that can be a much child-centered and longer, um, well, it gives them more time to work with them. We, we only get them, you know, maybe 10 days or less. And, and that's not, I mean, it's, it's helpful, but it's, it's not curing them by any means. There's still much more that needs to happen.
Thanks for that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have everybody for the?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to, uh, GIS.
Hey there. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, for those of you that do not know me, I've had the opportunity to work with many of you previously. I am Denise Weskup. I'm the Regional GIS Administrator for the Geographic Information Office. Uh, did everyone have the opportunity to read the memo that was prepared? So this is a annual update that I will sit down with each of the parent agencies that essentially support the GIO and provide an update and answer any questions. So before I get started, uh, does anyone have any questions about the memo that was prepared or statements?
Did you bring the assessor in as protection?
We protect each other.
Okay.
Just curious.
There, there's strength in numbers and actually there's a, a project that corresponds to, uh, one of the items that we'll be discussing that segues, I think perfectly into another project that helps support, uh, the county assessor, but has also branched off into support all of municipalities within Natrona County as well. So they just more or less piggyback one another very, very well. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, just a brief update regarding the GIO this year. Uh, this has really been a year for administration and also for technical upgrades. Uh, we're in the process of renegotiating our enterprise license agreement. Uh, they're a three-year agreement, so we are in the midst of actually upgrading, um, based upon our current user base. We've actually been, uh, it's been recommended that we, uh, jump up to the next tier of support, namely because our user base, our staff base has become so broad. Secondly, uh, we are also in the process of migrating to a new platform in regards to the platform that our staff utilizes on a daily basis.
Thank you.
And also, uh, some behind the scenes server upgrades. So we've been upgrading our database servers, our operating servers, uh, essentially in order to better serve out not just the data internally to our staff, but also the data that we serve out via our portal, GeoSmart. So we've been upgrading those and actually as of yesterday, we've completed two of the three upgrades. We'll be focusing on the third one later in April. Okay. Uh, any questions about some of those system or architecture upgrades? Not real, uh, I guess, uh, sparkly, but they, it's what keeps the daily operations going.
With those upgrades, it's the same system. It's just you're talking about internal use. There's going to be a different system or is it just a bolt-on?
Um, so the, the platform that we use, that's the core platform, is actually changing its base kind of desktop operation system. So we've been going through and getting our users familiar with that new system. So we're running in kind of a classic, um, for, for our daily operational needs, but we're in the process of migrating to this new interface that our users will interact with on a daily basis. Our full conversion, because it is so significant, is to have everybody rolled over by 2025. So this is more or less the first phase of that continual rollover that we're going to be seeing over the next couple of years. Okay?
I have a question. I would like to get a little mini tutorial and see how the system operates and explain to me what we're doing. And so when my constituents ask me about it, I won't have to say, let me go find out and I'll call you and.
Certainly.
I'd like, so I'd like to figure that out. Do I, should I go through Tammy on that or who?
Um, frankly, just contact myself. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'd be happy to just give you an overview of essentially a lot of the information that comes in. So to give you, for example, every week, because we work with the county mills, Evansville, Barnum, this, uh, Casper, in addition to the Health Department and all the other associated agencies, we have a weekly audit schedule where we bring in data from all of our partners, whether it's addressing or plats or what have you. Um, once that data comes in on a weekly basis, we put in quality control measures on it. Then it's essentially absorbed into our main architecture and then pushed back out and filtered in some respects for what's available to the public. So the addressing or the plats that you interact with on GeoSmart is essentially updated on a weekly basis.
Thank you very much.
But yeah, I would, I would be happy to give you a, a more detailed look at the system if you would like.
Just don't confuse me.
Whenever you can actually visualize it, I think in a mapping platform, it helps tie everything together. At least for me it does.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions regarding some of the system upgrades? Okay. Um, I'm going to look ahead and this is going to also, I think, correspond with some of the information that Tammy's going to relay as well. So as a part of, uh, the MPO, we also help support a five-year high-resolution ortho imagery capture. So every five years, the MPO sponsors a three-inch capture for that area within the, uh, the MPO boundary. Within the last two flight cycles, Natrona County has also helped , uh, collect data outside of that MPO boundary. To the extent in 2020, I believe it was 1,500 miles that Natrona County actually flew at six-inch resolution, whereas the MPO, its total area combined is about 280, 208 square miles. So it's almost flipped into becoming the Natrona County, um, flight. But, uh, as we're planning for the 2025 flight, we've also seen the opportunity, which many of you have probably engaged, with the Eagle View flight, that the oblique imagery that's been captured at the state level. And so I think that Tammy's office, and I know that our office and all of the agencies that participate in the GIO have also found value in the Eagle View, uh, data, namely because it's really interesting to have that oblique imagery available because it provides a different, a additional level of perspect, perspective that you can obtain at your desktop without necessarily having to go into the field each and every time. So Tammy, do you want to take it away from there?
So with, um, Eagle View, unfortunately I haven't had the opportunity to use that yet, but, um, just like we have our long winters, it helps our field appraisers, um, do, continue doing the assessments, um, that are available, um, that they need to do to keep up with our information. So we, with Eagle View, we get the continuing discounts and everything, um, that the state, uh, already has in place. Um, has in place. We would like to expand our flying for the entire county, if possible. Again, we do have a lot of rural area that we know that there's probably not anything out there, but this will help capture anything that we miss. Through, excuse me, because I'm not very good at this, so, and I just got this. As you flip through, towards the assessor evaluations increased approximately 16.7% just within, not from one year to the next, last year to this year. And it's just the beginning of this year by quite a bit of valuation that was brought in.
People aren't going to like that.
No, but during our review sessions that we have to meet so many parcels per year and because our winters are so long, using Eagle View, which gives us a clearer picture of what is actually there, we can continue our work and see if there's structures, no structures. Because we can't always rely on building permits, we don't get 100% of those. So with this imagery, it does help us. It is also an imagery that the Department of Revenue provides us or gives us the authority to use during our protest seasons as well.
Well, some of the protesters are starting to growl Assessor Salisbury, I can tell you that.
Yes.
You probably already know that.
Yep. Any questions so far on this particular imagery?
So I agree with you on expanding, right, the maybe the nine inch? In particular, up around the oil fields and whatnot, so we can capture that, right?
Yes, we do use it for oil field well locations.
But as far as the entire county, that's going to be a pricey little tag.
It is, yes. Let's see here. Where is our?
If you did that out at the, off the rail snakes, you'll catch a couple houses, but a lot more sagebrush and junipers.
Yes. Okay. So.
Hi, I'm Renee Berry. I work for the assessor's office. Nice to see you all. You guys are new.
Nice to meet you.
So what we come up against in the assessor's office is that the further out we go to assess property, the density decreases. So while we're in town, if you figure $3 average gas per gallon, say you've got three cars running, you're talking about $400 a week. If we're talking out of town, we're talking hundreds of miles, thousands of dollars a month, and the return isn't there because they're just, you have to drive so far to get so many properties. The benefit of doing the entire county is that then it actually gives us a new basis for the change finder layer. So what happens is our 2020 flight that was covered by the Department of Revenue would then be able to be compared to this newest flight. That software actually says to us, here's where you need to go because there's a difference. So it saves manpower, time, it saves the assessor a lot of money on discovery. And the other thing about that is, in mass appraisal, when everybody is paying for what they have, the overall burden goes down for everybody. So it's very critical that we get all of the buildings that are on in the county and on correctly. This would be a great tool and would save our office a lot of time and energy, and I think it would help the taxpayers, too. We have a lot of people come in that look at our maps and they love this imagery. We have a few that don't, but for the most part. So that's really where the.
Right, thank you for answering that. As far as the, from what I'm hearing, what you're saying now, and from what I understand in the past, with that change software, you're able to actually compare the properties and then when you find a discrepancy, a change, then you send out a field crew to see what's going on?
If we need to.
If you need to. But so, in fact, that is actually reducing the manpower need within the office itself and keeping the efficiency up, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So to just follow up on what Commissioner Mill was saying, does this all, will this also, because this surprised me when I talked to a bunch of the employees from your office, how much harassment they took and cars trying to run them off the road and various things. Will this eliminate that, too, to some degree?
I'll let Tammy answer that. I mean, I don't.
We don't know. The assessments will roll out the end of next month. I would hope that because we do not get 100% of building permits from each entity, that by the appraisers using this imagery, that they can see those changes or collect the improvements that are there that we normally don't get to see. Whether or not it, I can't, I think it would be a great tool to be used in our office as it has been. I don't know how the public will react.
So what's, just for the record, what's the cost of this to the county?
So for the nine inch, it's $70 per square mile, so a total of 341,670. Then if we only, is this within, I'm going to ask Denise this question, is this within our MPO on this discounted price?
No. This is outside the MPO, but the reason it's discounted is because it's flown during leaf on.
So if we fly versus, I think we're scheduled to fly this May?
April, May.
April, May, depends on snow. That if they do it in the summer months, it decreases quite a bit down to half the price, basically.
But it's also.
It's at, yeah, the three-inch ortho oblique.
What's the approximate amount of money this is going to cost us? And how much money will it bring in by doing it this way in terms of savings and all of that kind of thing?
Until we can actually get further outside of our, the MPO, the more densely populated areas, I believe it will prove to be very beneficial. Just in the in-town usage that we've done, you can see that the revenue generated quite a bit.
Well, I'm torn, I'm torn by two things. One is the cost of this and the fact that it's going to probably raise everybody's taxes. So that's part of the dilemma the commissioners always find themselves in. One is to represent their constituents, keep taxes low, not spend so much money, and then here, this is a fairly good expenditure and it's going to maybe raise people's taxes. So it's quite a dilemma for me. I guess, I guess we'll hear from the public.
And I won't disagree, you know? There's pros and cons about how we discovery. We're bound by statute to discover our improvements out in the county. And we do that a number of ways. We do it by foot, permits, maps. We use our mapping, all different types of maps to help find the discrepancies that are within our information.
Thank you, Madam Assessor.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate, this particular application, because of the way in which the licensing is structured, it does also open it for other agencies and the municipalities within Natrona County. So they're able to leverage its benefit for multiple uses besides assessment. It's, I know, heavily utilized with utilities, public safety, so the further that you can expand your flight line, it will also benefit those other agencies and municipalities as well.
Well, I'm going to say this tongue-in-cheek, is there any computer program we can buy that'll lower people's taxes?
That would have to be a question for the Department of Revenue.
Or the state legislature.
So you may not have a feel for it, or Renee, maybe you have a feel for it.
Renee would probably be better. She uses.
Well, no, the question I'm saying is with the reduction or the efficiency between manpower and whatnot, and how you're evaluating statutorily we're obligated to do, by using this system, do you feel like you were able to save, possibly reduce the amount of crews, field crews by one or two people? Or what would you need to do to maintain the same level without it?
So that's a hard question to just answer without giving a question.
Right, right, right. No, 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 I know.
So even with this as an aid to our office, we still don't have enough field appraisers, regardless of whether they're going out in the field, staying in. And that's because we've been really diligent about trying to verify sales by putting feet on the ground. So taking those folks off of permits and just the six-year rotational review, we pulled away from what we're obligated to do statutorily and then what we have to do to satisfy the needs of the county and the budgets and et cetera, et cetera. So this is not going to get rid of the burden of employees.
No, no, but.
But it's going to make them more efficient.
Right, which.
Which in turn, I feel like is a payback to the taxpayer.
When do we need to make a decision on what levels and whatnot that we can want to do?
To interject, just based upon the meeting that we had with Eagle View, like Eileen had mentioned earlier, they are ready to mobilize as soon as the snow melt allows. There are criteria within the state's contract that say that there has to be a percentage of snow cover removed, but also optimally, depending on which flight you choose, whether it's leaf on or leaf off. Oftentimes, of course, it's preferable leaf off because you can actually see the structure. I don't think it's realistic to think that they're going to be able to fly our mountain in April. It doesn't seem possible this year. So there's probably going to have to be at least May and potentially coming back for the mountain if need be, realistically. So given that this is already mid-March, if they were, and I think they are scheduled to fly other areas of the state in April to have a decision sooner, a soon would probably be preferable.
Mr. Chairman, maybe China will loan us one of their big balloons.
Well, we have at least one commissioner out today, a second one on the phone, but we will obviously need some time to talk with them. We can come back in one of the meetings in April and give you an answer one way or another of what direction to go.
And we can supply more information if you require that and more statistics. Figure that out within our office for what we use it for and for the entities that would benefit from this.
Okay. And if we have any questions that come up, I'll make sure that we'll feed them through.
Mr. Chairman, one final note is the area that you see in this graphic here is funded by the state, the Department of Revenue. And so every two years, not to exceed $7 million, they're committed to $2.5 million to fly all of the counties within the state in the populated areas. So this is a partnership with them.
Should I bother you guys to, PowerPoints are cool, but for me to get my head wrapped around numbers, can you get Excel or just in Word or something that I can see a little, understand and compare and think about a little bit better than PowerPoint?
Certainly.
Thanks.
You get anything else? Okay. We will get something back to you. Thank you.
Tend to be the best.
Thank you.
And I'm over on the second floor, City Hall. Yeah, I'll give you an overview. We have, it's been brief. I typically wear a hairband, but that's how most people know me. Yeah, you're welcome. I look forward to hearing from you.
This is just a work session. Can I talk?
I'll have to ask the chairman.
How you been, Terry?
Oh, I just wanted to know about Hills Half Acre, but I missed it, so I'll ask you later.
Were you going to buy it?
Oh, I tried to make it down to the Hills Half Acre deal, but I missed it.
You can build a restaurant out there and run a restaurant.
Terry, the only thing we carried, covered on that Hills Half Acre today was just whether or not they could move forward on some grant funding. That was it.
Okay, I understand.
No other discussion on it?
We've talked about Hills Half Acre quite a few times over the years. I was wondering, but you have no concession there or anything like that?
Were you on the commission when Van Irving owned the building out there and they ran the?
I was on the commission when the roof fell through.
Oh, really?
And that lady, you know, she couldn't pay her back taxes. I actually slept in a hotel that once.
I won't take it any further, believe me. Oh, did you? Was that when Van Irving owned it, or do you know?
So the, I guess we could, Natrona County Conservation District Manager, Lisa, are you ready to present? Okay, well, we're a little early today, but we'll get started.
Can I give her a PowerPoint?
Back to the chairman.
Mr. Chair, may I give her a PowerPoint? If not, I can just hand to the papers.
It's going to, it's going to take a minute because I have to have the flashcard.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a minute, because I have to have the flash card.
Oh.
Let me just give you the papers.
Okay.
That'll be good. I was gonna save you some time. Oh, I handed through the whole pile, but I need one to follow. All right, I'll have to get those. Chairman Freel, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I figured with three new Commissioners, I needed to come and present what we do, why we asked for funding, kinda fill you guys in. Each year, I do have a legislative luncheon, now that you guys are in office. Mr. Milne has been there quite a few times, but you are welcome to always attend that. We generally have it in between October and December, depending on the election year. But nonetheless, I am Lisa Ogden, I am the District Manager for Natrona County Conservation District. I've been with the district for 13 years now. The district has been in existence since 1941, so it's been around quite a few years, it's gone through a few changes before that. I'm gonna kinda follow my notes, 'cause I'm so used to going here, here, so anyhow, but what are conservation districts? We are the local government agency, we're special districts of the state, that we lead local conservation projects, anything for land, water, air, we don't do a lot of air here, we've got quite fresh air with the wind, but we are also non-regulatory. We do not go out and force any issue on any landowner, any city dweller, it is a, all of our programs are volunteer, and we just implement projects that those landowners are interested in. Basically, we teach the landowners to be better stewards of their land, so that it will pass on throughout the generations. Wyoming Conservation Districts were formed in 1941, and again, it was to implement farm, ranch, and urban practices on land to conserve soil, water, and air. A conservation district can be kind of whatever that board wants it to be. Our local board is elected in the general election, we have three rural, one urban, and one at large representative, so that way we've got the interests of everyone around. Now, most districts around the state, at least two-thirds of them, there's 34 of them, two-thirds of them are supported by mill levies. The Conservation District here tried to pass a mill levy back in, I wanna say '01, long before my time. It failed considerably, because as you all know, it's really hard to get taxes passed in the county. We have not tried again, we've always worked very closely with the Commissioners and the City of Casper, and the consensus has always kinda been, let, let's go for funding through the county and through the city, keep our base funding, which allows us to have an employee, and then we go for grants. We get grants for projects, and we get things on the ground that way. But you can see through the funding chart, most of our operational funding does come from City of Casper, as well as the Natrona County Commissioners. We also get some base funding through Department of Ag. It is in the aspect of what's called their base funding, as well as we get some lab funds for water quality work. And then, our other funding all comes, it's project funding that comes through grants that I go after. We get, we had a, we have a selenium project fund that the county and the city had given us over several years, a certain amount of money that we put toward practices that were for the entire county. They would, they were projects that would help a lot of folks instead of just go on a private landowner, so I'll get into those in a bit. Our biggest thing, I've kinda covered, we do the grants, the projects, different programs, and I'm, I'm just gonna run through what we, our prime focus is. Our prime focus has been impaired waters. The WDEQ has a list of waters that are impaired in the state of Wyoming. The North Platte River was one of them, up until 2018. We still have four rivers and streams and four water bodies that are listed as impaired for selenium, but in 2018, due to the data that the Conservation District had over the last 20 years, we were able to delist the North Platte River from that list, and so that was a very big success. The EPA did a full story on it, that's one of the biggest, longest stretches of water that has ever been delisted from an impaired waters list, so that was a real win for both the county and the city. Brief overview of selenium, and then I have booklets, I have other things, if you are interested, you can email me, you can call me, I will get you one. I've got the full background on selenium and what it really does, and I won't go over that here, but it is considered a heavy metal, it comes from the Cretaceous soils underneath pretty much most of Natrona County. If you look on the page five of the presentation, the Casper Alcova Irrigation District is the prime place we focused, because if you do look at this, the cody shale that contains that selenium is under almost all of Casper Alcova Irrigation District. It comes up through the soil into the water, and then transports to our waterways. So, what we have done over the last years, even long before me, was we would, the NCCD, as long, as well as Cade and NRCS, which is Natural Resources Conservation Service, they put in practices that would get rid of our traditional flood irrigation, and we would upgrade landowner's systems to sprinkler systems, whether it be side rolls or pivots, and that even spread of the water, instead of just flooding and having a lot of ponding and pooling, helps minimize how much selenium's transported through the waterways. Over the last 15 years, so probably right before I came in, when I first came in, there was about 55% of the irrigation district was already in sprinkler. We are close to about 68% now, and so we've put in a lot of pivots, we work very closely with NRCS also, because they have the federal funding. Those pivots, you can see the next page, on page 12, we do monthly water sampling. Again, that's a report that, it hasn't been approved completely by DEQ as yet for 2022, but if you are interested in seeing that, it will be done shortly, just please email me, call me, I'll send you a copy of it, once DEQ approves it. But, the chart that's on, well, it's page six of the papers, page 12 of the PowerPoint, it shows, and, and reduction every single year of our selenium. It did bounce in 2012, we had a sampling event right after that major storm that we got, about three foot of snow, and our selenium levels just popped way up. We've got a lot of selenium that sits in that soil, but when you get those gully washers, it pulls it out, and so it runs it down the stream. Otherwise, if we would've left out March of 2021, it, our levels would've just shown a consistent drop, but the levels of selenium are dropping. How we funded some of those projects is through the North Platte River Watershed Project, we worked with DEQ, got 319 grants for non-point source pollution. You can look, we've got, we've done tons of practices on land, including the sprinklers, the side rolls, we've done a lot of pipeline, we've converted 1,500 acres from flood to pivots or side rolls, put in 80,000 feet of pipeline, we've gotten rid of a lot of earth and ditch, we analyzed the samples monthly on anywhere between nine to 11 sites, depending upon access to those sites. The pictures this year, if you take time afterward to look at it, our drainages, I had one that the snowdrift in it alone was double the height of the fella that I go sampling with, and it's like, no samples this month, but every time it's accessible, we go sampling, at least once a month, but, and we're also working on soil health projects. We've done so many of the irrigation projects, now we're starting to get down to the smaller places, you know, you've got eight to 10 acres, they're oblong, or they're fan-shaped, or just something about the terrain makes it very difficult to install sprinklers, and so we're looking at other projects to help reduce the selenium, and so our next step was looking at the soil health issues, and that is a huge thing that NRCS is doing now. They're working on soil health across the nation. We have worked with a couple landowners intently, we've got one landowner that this year, they were set to put in their final perennial crop, and they chose to not do that and go ahead and plant cover crops again, because the crop production was so good, that they were allowed, had we not had the winter that we had, had we had our normal Wyoming winters, they would've been able to graze all winter long without feeding their cattle. On top of that, the numbers on their soil, as far as getting it analyzed, it has gone up, we put a lot of nitrogen fixers in there, it helps open the pore space, slow the compaction down, so the water can actually seep down into the ground, we've seen a lot of changes on their land, and it's only been three years. A proper soil health program rightfully should be eight to 10 years. Our grants go for three, so that's what we've done. My segment three of the North Platte River Project is going to end, the end of this year, but I've already been granted another grant to start working again this fall. It will include irrigation, soil health practices, pipelines, and projects such as that. Again, we focus in the Cade area, just because that is primarily where we have seen the selenium levels. Then, the project funding that we have gotten from the county, I did not put that in the request this year, we have had kind of a hiatus with Cade for a while, we've worked very, very closely with them, but for those of you that do irrigate, you know that they've had a lot of changeovers in their staffing, as well as their board members, but we have been working very, very close with them, we've got some new projects. Prior to the changes, we had done almost 19,000 feet of huge delivery line, and we were going forward, going forward, and then we had a bunch of changes. So now, we're going forward again, we just signed a contract with them to modernize the automation stations, as well as some of the measuring devices across the district, and that's where we're going to apply the selenium funds moving forward at this moment, so I think we're moving forward, so that's a good thing. And then, another, it's a time-consuming, but a very minor part of what we do, we do do tree, seedling tree sales, we get seedlings, trees from nursery up in North Dakota that are anywhere from 18 inches to six feet tall, and over the last 10 years, we've sold 66,000 trees.
Are they cottonwoods?
Little bit of everything, I've got about 100 species that I carry, and all of them are from North Dakota, and so they're all hardy, but I do have a cottonwood, but I also have the cottonless cottonwood. Most of our trees do go to the bigger landowners, but I do sell some urban.
Does the city buy some from you?
We have not sold to the city, I think primarily because they have their nursery outlets as well, and so they probably get about the same cost I do. Ours come from, it's the Soil and Conservation Service out of North Dakota, and they give priority to North Dakotans, which I don't understand, but they do. But anyway, yeah, we've got a lot of different species, they're all very hardy, there's some that are more tender, but I work with people as to what their soil is like, what their, you know, wind is at their area, depending on what's surrounding them, and we help them to kinda design that shelter belt, or wildlife-friendly shelter belt windbreak, which we needed tremendously this winter. But, yeah, I, when I sat down to add up how many trees, even if only half of those got planted, that's still a lot of trees over the last few years, and like I said, it's sort of a side project of the districts, but it sure gets a lot of trees out there. So, it's been very fun, 'cause even if you drive out to some of these old homesteads, or out by the farming land, and you see some of those big shelter belts that somebody planted 100 years ago, it's like, thank you, you're so glad to have those. But, those are our prime things that we're working on, do you have any questions at all?
I have two, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me anything about Garden Creek?
Chairman and Commissioner, I was, the Garden Creek Project was right before I came along, and so I don't have much information, other than when I did start, I did do some sampling on Garden Creek, and the reason why we dropped the Garden Creek site at the time was because there was no selenium in it.
Well, that's good, I live on Garden Creek, that's why I asked.
Okay, yeah, that, coming down off the front and the back of the mountain, 'cause we used to do Bates Creek as well, it's pretty clean coming down that mountain.
It's nice to hear.
Yeah.
City Park, you know where City Park is? So, I was dismayed one day, I walked my dog there, gone there since I was a child, never, the city cut down four huge cottonwoods that were planted over 100 years ago, and I wasn't happy with that, but I've gotten over it. But anyway, so why I asked you about cottonwoods, is I did go through the city, and I bought a cottonwood and planted it over there.
Okay.
And with the, the city's permission, I'd like to plant two more of them.
Okay.
So if I get that permission, is that something you can do?
I could potentially, I, I've gotta look at my list, as of this morning, they, the nursery let me know that they have no more cottonwoods.
Oh, okay.
But you are welcome to email me, and, or call, everyone, you know, everybody buys in bundles of 10 or 25.
I see.
And I might have some landowners that have some of the smaller. Now, the other thing about these, they're whips, and so when they come in, I tell everybody, they look like dead sticks, they've got these really nice root balls, and then they're three to five foot tall, but they do look like whips, they take a lot of protection to start going from people.
I think mine, that I planted, might've been 15 feet tall.
Oh, okay, ours aren't near that big.
It's.
But they're nice trees, and they will grow well.
Yeah.
But I can certainly see if I've got any.
All right, I just was curious, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Just have a key to ask you. I've always meant to ask you this, the samples, the samples that you pull off, after it's run through that shell, for so long, through this, you know, through the industry, is selenium a little higher up there?
We haven't actually sampled on Goldeneye, but where we do sample is South Fort Casper Creek, which comes out of Goldeneye, we sample out off of 33 Mile. It varies, I actually have a little bit of the water quality data with me, it's in my briefcase behind me, but it, it swings within a year, almost, we have run charts where it shows, you know, from 2001 to 2010, and then we have 2011 to 2018, and then 18 forward or something, the years are probably wrong. Most of those little creeks, they'll be real high in the winter, because at that point, the, you don't have as much water running through it, the salts are more concentrated, 'cause if you've got any ice in it whatsoever, the salts are more concentrated where it's not icy, and the salts and the selenium kinda travel together, even though it's a heavy metal, it travels like a salt. So what you'll see is during the summer, when you've got high flows, it dilutes the selenium as well as the salts. So it looks like it's lower during the summer, even though that's what DEQ calls it, you know, our irrigated lands are the reason for the selenium, but we're good that we run that irrigation water through there, because it dilutes it quite a bit. As far as actual numbers, it seems like it's lower up at South Fort Casper Creek than after the convergence with Casper Creek.
Did you see the spatial experience thing with the, you know?
You, I would have to look back at those numbers for positive, I, I can't answer for positive, but I can certainly give you that information, 'cause it shut the water off for quite a while, and, you know, I, I haven't looked at that, but I will, I'll get you some information.
Don't you doubt, just gonna hear some data, don't fuck with her?
It's, I don't, unfortunately. I do know, when we put in West Belt Loop, the selenium in the Oregon Trail Drain I do know, when we put in West Belt Loop, the selenium in the Oregon Trail drain just skyrocketed. Anytime you move the dirt and move the soil, it's amazing what it does. So.
I'm a full supporter of their tree program. That killed many of them.
I've planted a lot that the deer have eaten. But yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good program. But I tell folks, if you don't plant them right, you don't protect them, and you don't water them, they won't grow. But.
Can I ask you one other, just, just a formative question? What is the source of Garden Creek? Oh, I, did I stump you?
I was gonna say, I can't answer that.
I've always wondered that.
Source?
The source, yeah. Is it a spring?
It springs on the Casper Mountain and Snow Mountains. That is where it evolves.
Okay. I'm gonna go with their answer. Because that one, I don't know.
Well, it's an answer I never had.
Right, right. It never fails to amaze me where all the water comes from. You know, you, I still look at amazement at what comes off of any mountain.
It's gonna start rolling down Garden Creek pretty heavy here shortly.
Yes, it is. I keep telling folks, it's like, please, you know, let it just warm up slow. Let it melt slow, because otherwise, we've got a mess coming. But we'll see. Anything?
Good.
All righty. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Chairman and.
Can you introduce the folks that came with you?
Yes, I can, actually. I'm a stand-up. Dennis Scott is my board chair. We've got Tammy Cobb is the treasurer, and Rick Herman's the vice chair.
Nice to meet all of you. Thanks for coming down.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You too, and we'll see you either October, December. You'll be there. Thank you so much.
He'll buy more trees.
That's exactly.
It just occurred to me, I probably gotta buy the trees from the city, because it's the city park.
Well, if they get the bigger ones, it's very nice. So, all right, thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Senator.
Are you ever gonna give those trees any?
No. Those trees were.
They were dying. They needed to come down.
I had an arborist look at it, and there was only one that was in trouble.
There was a chair sitting right there.
And I'm over it, because I love the city, and I love McPirry. Did you have some? I'm not signing Jack's yet. You loan me your pen. Who else do we have? If you had them all come down.
Well, so, well, we got a sound. Talk to, or take a look at some of the returns.
My God. No wonder she came down. She's getting ninety grand.
Well, I saw two set up similar to what the banks have for long-term. And that's, that is what caused that rush, when the banks, the customers pick up. So, it's worth thinking about to look at class.
Send those down again. Those are just laying on the top here. See now, you guys, this is what I don't like. There's no numbers in that.
Here, let me repeat.
The statutes require those numbers.
I think that would be a good idea, to, to look at moving some of that stuff, at the wild class. A little bit more of the funds.
None of these have an amount. Take a, take a look at these. None of those have an amount.
They're ignoring you, Dave.
Dave, get down here and sign these checks.
He's just agreeing with me. I'm going to have a discussion with Nick to wrap my head around the whole, what we have, what it's at, what it's for. So I can make it better informed.
It's hard to, yeah, so, basically, some of the hospital funds, the other funds we have to, we got, we should, you know, we should. We should have made it to, really, I don't think. But. Classes, even better recovery. Triple A rated, the whole nine yards. Hold on.
I said, I agree with you on that.
All right.
We use the funds, and it would give us a better return, and we know that the wild class is three stars, so. So, I don't have any problem with moving some of that money over and getting a better return on it.
All right.
These vouchers, the payroll vouchers, they don't have amounts on them.
No. So, Tracy usually fills them in, because they fluctuate sometimes with overtime. And different, like, like lifetime garnishment, you know, with deductions that we have out of our paychecks. And so, we tend to not be able to do it. We don't know the numbers until right before payroll, when they figure it. So those ones are always blank. And then they'll fill them in when we have the final numbers.
It's like signing a blank check, and then somebody else gets it.
My boss will be able to explain it quite better than I could.
Yeah, I think it's, I tend to agree with Alice a little bit. I get it, we gotta sign an order for everybody to get paid, and this would be the time that we'd be able to sign them. But we are also signing blank checks.
Yeah.
Not knowing what the amounts are. And then, the same thing, with some of these, it comes through where they're written in there. Like I said, I have to go back and look at it, but I don't like that either.
Like, from the ones that come from me and that?
Well, if there's just a way that they could actually, I, I'd kind of like to get away from that, so that, not saying anybody can do it, but if somebody comes in.
Or they make a mistake.
We could sign off on some, and if somebody comes through and just writes in what they want, and put their initial next to it.
Well, but we, we are, no, I don't think it would, it would ever work. Because, I guess, I don't say that, but, so, I'll get the vouchers, and then I will build on them for like the entire month. So I will write, but, so, AP and payroll double-check me. And so, we have to have the work order, or the PO, plus the invoice. And then, we get checked by the auditors too.
So those are attached to that paper that you bring in?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
There's two, there's two levels behind.
Okay, I understand, on our level of times.
But gentlemen, but gentlemen, there's a state statute, specifically states, we should discuss that later. I'd like to just explain to you.
Well, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, as long as we have.
So whether it's time approved, or a little term.
Yeah, I don't, I would like to see everything come off a computer and be solved in the end. I think the city does it that way, I don't think.
So you're okay with him talking here? Okay.
This could cause confusion.
Yes, as I was talking, so I can make this more comfortable, if I try.
Yeah, but if you have the documentation right here.
Well, it's, it's there.
No, that's what they're saying, though, is that it does have documentation on there, so, and that's what it, yeah.
And if you talk to anybody, several would, for one reason, tell you some stories that's happened over the years, back in the day.
How's it going so far?
Good so far.
Your weekend?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I haven't been here long.
All right. All right.
Nobody's talking about it yet, so.
That is a good sign. See now, see, this hasn't been approved by anybody. I don't know what the hell that is. See, it has, should be, it says it has to be approved before, the statute says that. All of these are just ways. Who's Bart Olson?
Okay.
Works with the Sheriff's.
Okay, so these ones here, okay, so when you sign the vouchers, when you get to these ones, these are already vouchers that you guys have already signed, or were approved by the department heads. So anything under a thousand, you guys don't need to sign, or all three, or you're just signing on yours.
Your seven was five thousand.
Yeah, those ones you've already signed. So when, when they're on these batch reports, those you guys have already signed. So anything a thousand or more comes through on a voucher.
This, this doesn't tell me anything.
Well.
That does.
Yeah. So, so anything a thousand or more is gonna come through on a voucher that takes three signatures on the bottom. Then, anything under a thousand, so for us, Steve's gonna approve it at the top. And then, it's gonna go straight to accounts payable, and, and accounts receivable. And then, they are going to process it, and then it's gonna go into a batch report before the checks are printed.
See, here's the problem with this. Okay, so you have this information, and you have an attachment. Now, in the legal world, we would put here, see Exhibit A attached here too. And then you would put Exhibit A on this. Because you don't, if this became detached, you wouldn't even know what was on there. You could figure it out at some point. But it's just not a good procedure to have an attachment, and not reference that there is something attached to this main document.
Okay.
If we go file a bunch of documents, you have a one-page deal, say attached here too, is Exhibit A through whatever, and seventeen pages. And so, if the judge goes in there, it's, you only attach twelve of your pages.
Okay, and that'd be something to talk to Tracy about? We do get audited by Porter. So they, I mean, so if it's a different procedure we need to go through, you know, just bring it up to Tracy, and, and we'll, you know.
Now, now, what's this, where that, it's Xed out?
So here's, this is where I'm saying that it's under a thousand, but it's a seven-three, three-three, or three-nine. And that one actually doesn't need sign. That one just needs to be approved by Steve, because that's one cent.
Another one with the double, with the X on it.
So seven-three, three-three, and three-nine are one cent lines.
Dude, you're like getting all this out of whack here.
Well.
Well, I would've went through it anyway, so it's okay.
And you got my pen?
Then these sheets here, and so the reason I just continue to write on these, is because we send these through the mail. So our auditors will not allow us to pay a bill if it's not actually approved by the vendor. So they actually sign here as the claimant. And then, when, once I get these back, I just keep adding. So it's less mail, less postage, and less paper.
See now, here's one that doesn't have a total.
Yes, and the reason for that is, that is their way of double, that's Tracy's way of making accounts payable and receivable, look at every voucher.
All of this paper here today, do I sign?
Um, just, yeah, just the ones where we have these so far. I'll, I'll go through them, and I'll find them for you.
And then, with not having another commissioner here, do I need to sign?
Yeah.
Both places? So if it has this up here, and then sign the bottom?
Yeah, if, I mean, probably, or what we can do is, we can leave them, if you're not comfortable doing it. We can leave it, and IT, or not IT, AP will bring it back up to me, and they'll pay it anyways, and then we'll just get that final signature.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, because it's not technically, I don't think, I mean, we're gonna process it anyways.
Okay.
So, we'll treat it as a rush.
Dallas needs a pen for his desk, so he has one.
Thank you.
You don't, do you have anything in your drawer?
A pen?
Yeah.
I probably do.
Okay.
Pens disappear in my world.
Still signing those.
Here's this. These need to be signed. These are the ones that don't have anything on them.
Those are the ones that you said no, but those.
Do you have a pen? Jim, do you have an extra pen? Can I borrow it? Oh, here, here, he's got one. He has one, but no, you can't use it.
I lost track last.
You need one?
No, she's gonna be.
I don't know what I'm doing. Did I get up to heart and gall? Or did I get up to heart and gall?
He was gonna, he needed a pen.
Oh.
But we found one.
Okay.
We found one in the garbage.
So these, I shouldn't have really have anything to send, oh, yeah.
Yeah, as long as you don't sign up here, you're okay.
I can sign up there on those, though.
Okay, all right.
But on these here?
Yep, yeah, on those ones for sure. And then this one, you could sign. This one.
I think we're leaving all the bottom ones. The third signature we'll have.
Okay.
Somebody else can sign those.
So these ones, you're gonna sign up top.
Where's Nicholas from today? Anybody know?
He's on a trip.
Oh, he's, yeah, he said he was going on a trip, yeah. The only other way we could do this, to even make it more screwed up is, Steve, we could, she could get a rubber stamp with your signature on it.
Oh, wow, I didn't see that.
What's that?
The old police chief in Glenna, his wife's accused of stealing.
Oh, my God. Who's, who's the police chief?
Which one's that? Huh?
Take a look.
I thought you were gonna say it was Mike.
I didn't, Mike hasn't been a chief for a long time, has he?
But he's an old one.
I like Mike. He thought he was gonna get the chief's job too, and didn't get it. What year did you retire the police?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Okay, do we?
Yeah, that one, you'll sign.
Unless there's no update. I'd like you.
Do we have exec?
We did? Yes, yes, there, I have one.
Oh.
There's no, there's no executive meeting?
No. Okay. Okay.
We, we told me an email would be fine. So it's gonna send an email out.
Okay.
I, I didn't see it. What was the subject matter?
Here, I'll make you look at these. Well, Dallas can still go. Let his dog out.
I'm going to go do that.
We'll get to the smart on.
Thank you, sir. Hey Charmaine, when you leave, are you with your BLM? Come on in.
Oh, this is the Marcon, yeah?
Yep.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, I wanna go ahead and give you some, uh, folders that I have here for, I'd like to talk about today.
Okay.
I'm Kevin Christensen, I'm the District Manager for Bureau of Land Management here in Casper. And with me today is Ben Begalki, he is the Casper Field Office Manager.
Good afternoon.
Uh, we were before the Board, uh, October fourth, I believe it was, and at that time, uh, then Commissioner Hendry had asked me to come in and talk with the Board about the Marton land acquisition that the BLM had completed. At the time, uh, as I told the Board back then, we were under litigation, and, uh, that I would not be able to disclose a huge amount of information, but that when we did get on the other side of the litigation, that I would come back before the Board of Commissioners to, uh, talk a little bit more about where we'd been and where we were gonna go with that. So I'd like to take a few minutes to go through the presentation with you, it won't take very long, and then Ben's got some updates on some, uh, road projects for you.
Okay.
So on the first slide is just the big picture of where the Marton property is at. I've highlighted that there are a number of recreation areas that have been put in along the North Platte River that were BLM projects. Uh, starting back in the two thousand two, two thousand three timeframe, the BLM acquired some lands along the river, and those opened up into some recreation areas that, that you see depicted on, on the map there. Uh, on the next slide is the acquisition overview, just to highlight that most of the land that was acquired is in Natrona County, but some of it was also in the Carbon County area. Uh, all told, uh, over seventy-five thousand contiguous acres of public access now exist. So we bought just under thirty-six thousand to get access to, um, a fairly large chunk of, of contiguous public land. There's still, uh, there's state parcels that are in there that were previously inaccessible to. Those are now accessible, and we're working with the State of Wyoming on those. The one area that's in the red hashed mark area is private land that did not, was not part of the, uh, Marton family ranch, and did not convey. Uh, just wanted to highlight too that, uh, the Marton Ranch was not the first of the acquisitions that we did, uh, this is actually the eighth one. The seventh one was the Rimrock property where the Battle of Red Buttes took place, right outside of Casper, and, uh, we're, uh, still working on some land, planning for that. But bottom line is, uh, that Marton Ranch had been sitting out there for about ten years before, uh, Congress started giving us some money to, uh, look at opportunities for increasing public access. And the reason that the Marton Ranch was, uh, prioritized is through the Dingle Act. The Dingle Act gave the public the opportunity to nominate land areas where they wanted us to prioritize for public access, and that was one of the areas that the public had nominated, uh, to us. So on the timeline, I just wanted to highlight, um, it took several years, Congress appropriated money for us to do that, uh, really over four years total, starting in two thousand eighteen. We had envisioned a series of relatively small, uh, pieces of land to get parts of access. And then, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, we actually received the entire amount of twenty-one million dollars, and that gave us the ability to, uh, go after all the land that was available. So when the BLM acquires land through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, we don't buy the land ourselves. Uh, the Conservation Fund, a private, a third-party organization actually does. All the negotiations with the landowner, uh, they're the ones that initially acquire the land, and then it conveys over to the BLM after they've purchased it. So we did post it out to our public website in, um, February twenty-two, after a tentative deal was reached with the Conservation Fund. One of the questions that had come before was, um, you know, why was it that, uh, you know, there wasn't disclosure made, uh, about this? Uh, that had, and that was something I didn't talk about the last time I was here. The Marton, at the request of the Marton family, the TCF entered into a non-disclosure agreement. Uh, and we, the BLM, honored the T, the agreement between the TCF and the Marton family for the non-disclosure agreement, to a point, and that was when they reached an agreement. Uh, that's 'cause until they reached the agreement, we didn't know if there was actually gonna be a deal. But once they reached an agreement, that was when, uh, we started reaching out, uh, to let, uh, other stakeholders know that this was a thing that was going to happen. And that included, um, uh, reaching out to the Governor's Office. Then, uh, Commissioner Hendry, uh, was our primary point of contact, and I had a number of conversations with him to, uh, uh, get his feedback. And then we also briefed, uh, our Congressional Field Staff Representatives, uh, for each of our federal, uh, representatives and senators. Uh, we closed on the property on May twentieth. And that, on the second page is where, uh, State of Wyoming, uh, filed litigation against us on the acquisition with the Interior Board of Land Appeals in July. And, uh, shortly thereafter, in October, we reached an agreement with the State of Wyoming, uh, to agree that we would take the, um, environmental, uh, assessment that was done, uh, supplement it with the things that the Governor's Office had identified, that they wanted us to see, uh, analyzed in a little more detail. We agreed to do that, and, uh, we also agreed that we'd go out for, uh, provide for more opportunities for public commenting. And so that's where we are, uh, transitioning to where we are today, which is on the next slide, uh, our way forward. So we're just about complete with, uh, doing the analysis that, uh, the State of Wyoming asked us to do as part of the settlement agreement. And, uh, this is where we're now coming before you to, uh, talk with you about what is going to be coming out in the next, uh, few weeks. Uh, and one thing that we would like to do, uh, is also make a request. If there is a Commissioner, uh, on the Board that would like to work directly with us, uh, to review the documents, provide comments and feedback, uh, be a conduit, uh, that would be very helpful for us as we go forward. Um, we're looking to facilitate, uh, with the Governor's Office and state cooperating agencies and other agencies that wanna participate. Uh, a cooperating agency meeting on April sixth would be a, a virtual meeting where, uh, folks can, uh, come on, take a look, ask us questions about how we supplemented the analysis. We won't go from the very beginning, we'll just really cover the things that we were asked to go back and do some additional analysis on. But that'll be a, a public, uh, meeting that we'll look to do, not a public, I'm sorry, cooperating agency, uh, meeting on April sixth. Uh, after we get that feedback from state agencies, uh, county, then we will go out for three weeks of public commenting, we'll put it out. Uh, we'll put out some press releases and things, let people know that they can go out and take a look at it. And after three weeks of public commenting, uh, we will address whatever the comments are that, uh, come in and issue our final, uh, decision sometime at the end of. We'd like to be able to do it, uh, end of May, first part of June is, uh, what our, our target plan is. And then what we'll do going forward, um, you know, assuming that we get through all of that, we'll issue, we'll, we'll start a formal land use planning process. So all this does is just cover us through the initial acquisition. What we do with the property going forward, uh, will be a formal planning process, where we will, uh, look at the land, uh, we'll have public scoping meetings, we'll have cooperating agencies that will tell us, Wyoming Game and Fish, and the county, of course, will be a cooperating agency if you wanna be. And then that'll kinda lead into a process where we'll make decisions about what might be developed in the future. Rec areas, uh, whatever it is that the public, uh, tells us, uh, is their biggest, uh, desire for us to, to do going forward. So that's kind of our way forward. Wanted to talk with you on the next slide, just to brief about how do we manage the lands, uh, in the interim? We have a decision that is in our current resource management plan that basically tells us if new lands come into, to, uh, our management, we're to manage it like the area that's surrounding it. And so we have a number of decisions that already cover quite a bit of the area along the river, uh, a number of other areas, there's, uh, wildlife habitat areas that we'll manage it for. And that'll be just our interim until we, uh, formally initiate and go through the land use planning process. So when I talk about it down at the bottom of the slide, that will involve us reaching out to, uh, tribes that have had, um, uh, historical ties to the area, they'll have an opportunity to talk with us and tell us what their concerns would be about the use of the area. We'll have, uh, public, uh, scoping meetings, we'll go out for formal planning, um, and be lots of opportunity to determine how we'll move forward with future management of the lands. And, uh, like to do then is just open up for any questions, uh, that you might have about the Marton Ranch.
A couple of questions. Is the property patrolled, so I'm using the word patrolled, by govern, federal government employees or states?
So a little, it would be a little bit of both. Uh, the county, uh, would patrol out there, there's still county roads.
Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, Sheriff's Department. Uh, so there are still county roads that run through, on the edge as well as through it. Uh, we have two federal law enforcement officers that work for me that, uh, have that as part of their plan to patrol the area. And of course, Game and Fish would have, uh, game wardens that would be working, uh, along the eight miles of rubber front.
So has the government always used the straw man, this Conservation Fund, to buy land like this?
Well, um, that probably depends. For the lands that, uh, I'm aware of that have been, uh, acquired here, uh, in my area, it's been through the Conservation Fund. Within the district, well, actually, just within the State of Wyoming, we have about four hundred and fifty thousand acres that are available, federal land that is available for disposal, that we can sell and transfer to, uh, private landowners today. If we acquire land, it's generally either gonna be through an exchange. We have several, had several ranchers that have come to us and asked, uh, to do exchanges so that they get more, the federal land that's in, in holding in their ranch, and in turn, we get some land that enables some public access. But if we're gonna acquire new land, it's generally gonna be through the Conservation Fund.
So is that a government agency?
Uh, it is.
They're, they're a non, nonprofit organization, five oh one C three.
But they were, they were put into permanent, uh, status by Act of Congress in twenty-twenty-one, I believe.
So they're funded by federal money?
It's a Land and Water Conservation Fund, um, is not appropriated funds, it comes from offshore royalties.
Interesting, why do they use it?
The Land and Water Conservation Fund?
The.
Land and Water Conservation Fund.
The Conservation Fund that purchased the Marton Ranch initially was a straw man. I call, that's what they call it in certain legal circles, is a straw man.
Uh, I think that, uh, if it meets the criteria that, uh, the Land and Water Conservation Fund was established for, then the TCF is one of, I think, a couple of organizations that are allowed to, uh, go and, and acquire the land on our behalf.
And i- i- it isn't deeded in the Conservation Fund? In the, in the United States government?
It's initially in them, for them, and then the deed is transferred over to the federal government. So we closed, the TCF closed, I believe, the twentieth, and then the next day, the land was, uh, deeded over to the federal government.
With all the initial publicity that came out, they were selling it to the Conservation Fund?
Yeah, and, and they were the ones that.
Do you think that's misleading with the people, to not know who's really buying it?
Um, I would have to defer on that, 'cause I don't know if the Conservation Fund, uh, actually does. They do purchases for county and, uh, city government. I believe there's some city property that has been acquired by the Land and Water Conservation Fund as well. I believe like the park, um, that's at the base of, uh, down below the event center.
But what's the reason for it?
Was purchased by the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
What's the reason to use it, do you know?
To use the TCF. Um, I think that, uh, they're able to do things probably, uh, routinely more efficiently. When we, when we, to be honest, to do a land exchange and to do a sale, uh, I sold in Buffalo one point one-three acres to settle a trespass, and it took me two years getting it through Washington DC for one point one-three acres. The TCF can handle stuff, uh, more efficiently than, than we can in some cases. They have their own, uh, people that do appraisals, surveying, they do all that, uh, that really expedites the process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just had one question, and then with Jim, on your acquisition overview.
Yes, sir.
Page there, I'm assuming the outlined section is, that's the full Marton Ranch itself?
Yes, sir, the outlined in orange is the Marton Ranch.
Is there anything that's not state land, or that block that you said is private? Other than that, it's all BLM land?
That's correct.
Okay.
With the, there's, uh, up in the top, uh, northern corner, there's forty acres that was the actual Marton homestead that was not acquired. So the Marton family still has that. I'd also like to add too that, um, we agreed with the Marton family to give them, uh, the grazing rights for, they were, they were landowner, now they're permatee, so they still have access to the same amount of land that they had before. Uh, so they have three years that we gave them, uh, all that land to graze, uh, at that. Between now and then, they'll have the opportunity to determine if they want to continue to, uh, ranch there, and we're working with Randy Marton, uh, you know, for a grazing permit if they wanna go that direction.
Okay. Jim?
So I had some people, let me ask you some questions.
Yes, sir.
Um. Let's, I, I had a question that just kinda occurred to me. It goes with the Rimrock though, not the Marton.
Sure.
When that was being sold, the family wanted to set up a, a memorial or a kinda monument or something like that up on the rim there. Were they allowed to do that prior, or do you, do you have any idea?
I'm not familiar with it.
I'm not aware of any requests to, uh, set up a memorial. Um, there is, um, a family grave site on the property, um, where there's a small memorial that was there prior to our acquisition, and that remains.
And that remains, okay. I think that's what, uh, I was thinking about that, I've slept since then.
Yeah.
Uh, that was a day or two ago. The, a couple of questions that were asked is mainly about the TCF and kinda what Commissioner Lard was talking about. Um, the TCF, when it's used, is it? And how you describe it here? The question's basically, was it, is it basically a workaround in order to not involve the cooperative agencies or Natrona County that do have a land use plan that, uh, BLM, other federal agencies are encouraged to work with the, the counties if they do have a land use plan? Is that, if, with the TCF, making the initial purchase, is that just kind of a way to get, do a workaround so that you don't have to participate, get that county input?
Uh, no, sir, that's not, uh, certainly not the intent. Uh, the way that, uh, the TCF handles some of the logistics of just acquiring the land that makes the timeline more streamlined, but it's. makes the timeline more streamlined, but it's not intended to circumvent any type of input.
Okay, and this kind of dovetails on that, same type of, same question with the, with the, by using the TCF, it basically allows the BLM to avoid the no gain property rule. Is that also why TCF is being used, is to avoid, as a workaround there?
No, sir, one, one thing that we want to do, and we've had, my state directors had conversations with the governor about this, is that we acquire land, we want to provide opportunities for lands to come out of federal ownership. And example is up in northern Converge County, we have 790 acres of land that we're selling to a ranch up there. Our goal is to stay at a net zero, and we're actively working disposal actions to get land out of federal ownership in the hands. In fact, we have, we have a lot of federal land that is marked for disposal. We have, I have one field office where 100% of the land, my Newcastle field office, 100% of the land that's managed by that field office, is available for disposal, and we're looking for opportunities to transfer that land into either private county, state ownership.
Okay. I have another one, but I'm going to put my question in first now, since we talked about that already. So with, with this chunk of land, yeah, so if you're getting rid of property up in Carbon, did you say, or something like that?
It was on northern Converge.
Converge, to private or whatever, that's, that's great for Converge, but for Nitrona County, are, the ag taxes values are going up. And so with this big chunk of ag ground going out of front, out of production for taxes, out of revenue, and as we're getting, we're, we're receiving the payment in lieu of taxes, but are we going to potentially see an increase for Nitrona County with losing this big chunk of ground, or how's that work?
So the way it looks right now, it looks like Nitrona County appears to be maxed out on payments in lieu of taxes. My office doesn't do the payments in lieu of taxes, but we did analyze that recently, and I think we looked at a total of 14, a little over $14,000 worth of tax revenue that had been coming into Nitrona County. Almost, well, most of that is actually from the homestead that retained. So only about $4,000, maybe $4,500 is going to be, or it's going to be less for the county. So you put 4,500 in context, about $3.2 million in payments in lieu of taxes, the overall amount that Nitrona County's going to lose in tax revenue is relatively small.
Okay, great, thank you on that one. Last question that was asked, the, um, did the county land use plan or the updated zoning code that we recently, the county recently passed in December, allow or promote this acquisition?
So I don't know about the zoning aspect of it. I'm not familiar with what changes may have been made with the zoning. With regard to the land use plan, my conversation that I had prior to the closing with then Commissioner Henry was that the only concern, the only two concerns that were expressed was, one, the reduction in the tax revenue, and then the other was, the only, he said that he went and looked at conformance with the land use planning, and the only thing that he saw was the overall net increase in federal land ownership was the only nonconformance area that wouldn't be a showstopper.
Okay. But according to your timeline here, this, this was clear back in 2020, and that zoning passed last December, so it probably would have been negligible, or not even anything, right?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with how the zoning would have directly impacted it.
Okay. And then just a last comment, when do you think you're going to have that stuff done over there by the government bridge for a lot of work being done?
The Price Road? Oh, well, that's one of the things he's here to talk about.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes, I can address that right now. So, so the Price Road project, obviously you've noticed, and I can give just a quick two-minute background, the need for that was completely resource focused. We have some pretty sensitive cultural sites out there that were required to protect, that were being damaged with the use of the existing road and the further damage during poor conditions, wet, muddy conditions. Plus, we wanted to provide a better accessibility option out there, because I'd been on that road, even in a four-wheel drive pickup, and it, it wasn't fun. I mean, you could tear some stuff up on the bottom of your truck the way it was. We wanted to improve that road and provide some better accessibility for folks to utilize that area. And so with projects like that, we contract out to have that work done, and the company that, that we contracted with last year ran into some of the same scenarios that we all have with construction, with some materials limitations, there's a pretty significant drainage that we put a lot of engineering into in the culvert to allow for proper flow, and they had some limitations there. So they did get delayed. We were scheduled to complete that last fall, and we put some press releases out saying that work wasn't going to be done, and a small section would remain closed. Just yesterday, we had a meeting on resuming those efforts, and the individual that manages that contract is currently working with the contractor to find their availability when they can get back here, as conditions allow, to complete that last section. And most of it is regarding finishing up that area where the significant culvert will be, and make sure that's done right under proper conditions. But to be able to set that properly with right soil conditions, of course, we've got to wait for ground to thaw and dry out a little bit, but we do anticipate that to be opened back up, and we'll have some press releases coming out on that in the near future as to the status and progress of it.
One, one question. Just give me a rough number, if you know, what percentage of Wyoming does the federal government own?
I'm thinking, isn't it like 51, 52%, something like that?
I think that's the BLM land ownership. I can't speak with Forest Service, Park Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, so I don't know the, the.
So BLM owns over half of Wyoming, and then it may be even more if we add in.
Only clarification that Commissioner I would add is that the public owns that, and we're managing it on their behalf.
I got, I hear you. And look, I understand you guys work here, that's it, you know, but there are a lot of people who did voice adverse statements about this purchase, because it was more private land going to the government. It's kind of a Wyoming thing, you know?
It's, it's very much a thing, and we've, I've heard that in a number of places that I've gone and spoken, is, you know, just a general concern about the degree with which the federal government manages public land in the state of Wyoming. We've also heard from a number of groups that have expressed a great deal of interest in the opportunity that it presents in terms of public access, hunting, and, you know, other opportunities for the public to get access to the land that was once landlocked in. So we looked at it on social media as the whole thing progressed over time. It was about, in totality, about 10%, sometimes as high as 20% that were opposed, and generally we ran about 80, 90% on comments, and just based on social media. Don't know how representative that is, because that's just the people who are willing to go on social media, but generally about 80% were pretty supportive of it. Jim? Thank you very much.
For the new commissioners and whatnot, can you give the general border of the Casper Office District, what, what, what do you take care of?
It is primarily Nitrona, Converge, Platte, and Goshen Counties.
And then, does the Rollins Office come up into Nitrona at all?
The very southwestern corner, when you get out by that Independence Rock, Ferris Mountain area, the Rollins Field Office manages a portion of that.
Within my district, we have Casper Field Office, but we also have Buffalo and Newcastle, so we manage for Johnson County, Sheridan, Campbell County, Crook, Niobrara, and then we also have Weston County, and then all of the state of Nebraska, which isn't very much public lands there.
Thank you.
Okay. And you're looking, you need a commissioner to be a point of contact?
Yes, sir, if that's a thing that we could do, that would help streamline our, our communication.
I think, wasn't Peter kind of?
Yeah, let me, let me figure out who we have. Peter's out today, Dave's on the phone, but we'll, I'll figure out who that is and get back with you, and let you know who that point of contact will be.
Sure, appreciate that.
You bet. Good.
I don't mind doing it if it wasn't quite so tied up already with other boards.
Right.
It's ridiculous. Your Rangers are awesome, though.
Good to hear.
And your field guys.
We appreciate that, I'll be sure to pass that on to them.
Enjoy working with them, and whenever I have problems with my lease, I haven't had problems, come in and talk to them, and everything's great, so I really do appreciate working with you guys.
One thing we'll just offer, if, if the board commissioners ever has any future questions or concerns, please just let us know. I think you've got my contact information there, and I'll be glad to come in anytime to answer any questions that you have.
Sounds good, appreciate that.
Yeah. If there's two or three minutes left, I can give you a quick update on our Muddy Mountain Road Improvement Project as well.
Good.
I think it was back in 2020, I came to the board and brought back to life a 2015 application for a federal lands access program and federal lands transportation program application. And for some of the new commissioners, I think Mr. Hegler's probably updated over the last several months on, on this, but it's really a partnership between federal highways, Bureau of Land Management, and the counties. And I think the counties utilize that on some of the roads out by Pathfinder and other areas as well. And so we got things moving back in 2020, everybody was on board, we've been working through the design phases. We've recently received a 95% design phase for our Muddy Mountain portion. And so, a quick overview, of course, from the top of Casper Mountain, going down the south side to Circle Drive is the county portion, and then the BLM portion is from Circle Drive intersection or close to, up to the top of Muddy Mountain, including our campground and parking areas. Our primary purpose through the federal lands transportation program was simply to improve access and provide a more quality experience. We knew we were very limited with parking up there, ADA accessibility could be improved upon, and so that was the primary purpose of our improvements. And so going back to 2020 and some of the original designs, our portion has increased an estimated amount from a little over $2 million to almost $5 million that federal highways will be investing for this project. We'll be doing essentially a complete resurfacing of the road, and one of the significant changes that has come about is we have identified two areas that we are actually going to pave. Originally, we had talked about paving the entirety, how would that change use and the risk, given that road and some of the corners and steepness, but there are two substantial areas that just get so washboardy that the engineers felt we could make some long-term improvements by paving some of those. So we'll be improving that surface, providing a few extra pullouts in areas where folks can get off, either for photography, or simply to get out of the way if a big camper, horse trailer's coming up or down the road. And then up on top, we'll have much improved parking and ADA accessibility. That's been a big limiting factor for us, is parking and the amount of use that that area gets. And so just this week, we've received those 95% plans, we're working with the contractors to develop timelines, and there, there will be some inconvenience with a project that size. I'm sure you guys are aware and planning for that on Casper Mountain as well, with either potential temporary closures or limited use, so we're working through those details with them. We still anticipate allowing use throughout the summer, especially prime holidays, Fourth of July, things like that, that we've said, we've got to have that place open for people to utilize in the weekends. And so right now, we're looking at some restricted access, like Monday through Thursday, but allowing traffic through still, and not a complete closure. So we may be looking at during the paving, a very short-term closure of areas for a day or so, but we're pretty excited that that will go out for a solicitation for a contractor to complete that work, and we should be on schedule for construction next summer, so 2024 construction. So it's going to be a big project for us, and I think a huge benefit to the community and improve some access up there.
What two sections?
Man, they're essentially the two steepest sections. I don't have a visual, I can certainly provide that to you, but there are two fairly steep sections where as people head up, they just spin and get washboard.
Past the Y or on your side, or?
Yeah, on our side. Our side, yeah. Yeah, I was just referring to our side, and we've been in communication with Mr. Hegler on, on the county side as well. I mean, this thing's been a team effort from the start, and we've certainly appreciated his efforts. But yeah, the, we'll just have two, I think one's around 2,000 feet and one's around 3,500 feet sections where, where it's notoriously bad, and for longevity and cost, cost of maintenance, over the long term, it made sense to invest and pave those. There'll be a lot of increased guardrails. We know that simply paving portions of those will change the use a little bit, speed and things like that, so there'll be some additional guardrails and things to improve safety as well.
How many miles of pavement?
It'll end up being, I think, about a mile total. Out of our stretch is about 7.3 miles, so it's, it's a fairly minimal amount total. And that's one of the things we really considered. I mean, if, if we were to pave that in its entirety, it would completely change the use of that place. The campgrounds are pretty, and camping spots are pretty limited in size. I mean, we can't accommodate 40-foot fifth wheels up there now, where if it was paved, I think we'd have interest for that. And so we tried to find some middle ground where we can still improve the user experience and accessibility without significantly changing the use and having to modify a lot of the things, the infrastructure up on top.
Even the areas that aren't getting paved are getting paved, are getting pretty significantly improved with more parking, so I think, I think the community will really enjoy the increased access up there.
Any else still close over the winter and stuff like that?
You should see the snow that's up there right now, you can't, it's indistinguishable where the road is. People are always bugging us to open before Memorial Day. I'm not sure that's going to happen this year, but there's a lot of snow up there.
One of the things I recall from when I came in 2020 was somebody had mentioned, if we paved the whole thing, the county would entertain using equipment to try and keep it open. And that, I think, is insurmountable.
After this year, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I mean, every engineers that looked at it has said, there's no way we're going to fight that drift. Part of the project is improving the snow fence that's up on top of the hill, where we have our most significant drifting over the road, but all the engineers have said that there's, we're not going to stop it, to be able to keep that thing open year-round.
And just to reiterate for these guys, it's, it's from that Y up and then around, right?
Yep, the campground itself.
And so that's their part.
Yeah, and that'll be a complete resurfacing of that.
Where are you getting the gravel from?
I don't know, I'm not sure. I don't know that we're that far along.
I know Rob would definitely want to ask that question.
He would have asked the gravel question. That was a 33-mile road gravel question, yeah. I think we found a good alternate source, though, for that.
Yes.
Easier, sometimes it's easier. Easier, sometimes it's easier to get a private source for your gravel than it is to get it from us. We've got that.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll continue to work with Mr. Hegler on that, and, and we're pretty excited, and we'll start to communicate that more as we get closer to construction and, and letting the public know about the activities that'll take place.
Sounds to me like that's just gonna be the beginning, when you get it done, because people are gonna wanna be up there.
Yeah, yeah, and that is one of the things that we've considered, is we'll see how much of an increase in use we may have, if the type of use changes. And if, if those things, similar to Marton, like Kevin mentioned, if we hear from the public, or we have proposed changes to some of our infrastructure, those are always things through our planning process that we give public input on, and, and what does the public really want up there? And we get that regularly, increased mountain bike trails, horse corrals, things like that, that are always being considered.
Interesting. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity.
So Sherman, we wanna go over the, the agenda then?
Mr. Chair, it's pretty straightforward, if you have any questions, I can try and answer those. We have, looks like, three contracts. And then, we also have one resolution, which is correcting a previous resolution that had an error in it.
The application for a new retail, where's that? Black and gold.
I'm trying to remember.
Black and gold.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Right, and so that's a, a new application, is my understanding, it's a new one, so they don't have any vested rights to have that. And I don't know if you saw Justin's last email saying, "Looks like things might be okay for Hornspeak."
Right. So if you could advise on that, but my understanding is, is that, so they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and moving forward on that, but if we, obviously we'll take it off the table tonight and take it up again, but if we, we do have the right to approve it, but not allow the sale of alcohol off of it until these corrections are made, correct?
Yes. It, it's referred to as parking, kind of?
Right.
And so, a licensee can park a license for up to one year at, at a particular location. And so, if you grant the license subject to it not being used until the building meets the requirements that it needs to, that is an option.
Okay, all right.
They're not parking it, they're not under the rule of parking it, and you do just, she's right, you get one year. But this is a situation where they're not going to be able to serve alcohol, they don't have the building completed, which is a little different treatment, which means they're not subject to the law.
Well, we're, we're, well, yeah, they are, because it has to be renewed every year.
Well, it has to be renewed, but they, they're not limited to the parking, they could, they could finish this and then ask you to park it for a year, and they would be able to do that. It's called something else, I forget what Tracy said, what she called the, she called down Cheyenne, and they, they had, because there are people who shut down their business, and they...
Remodel, basically, or whatever.
But it's not called parking.
Parking is where they put it, make the, put the license at like a non, like a residence or a non-whatever place.
I think, Chairman Commissioners, I think it's non-operational.
Non-operational, that's...
Yeah, non-operational, that's the term I'm looking for, so that's what's gonna happen, Steve, if we give him a license, it's non-operational, he can't serve booze there until he has a certificate of occupancy.
But then, as soon as they do, then they can start...
Right, so, I guess, sum it up, we can approve it with the stipulation that he meets all the requirements of the building department, and they open up, once they open up, then it becomes active again.
Yes.
Good.
What we do is approve it, be non-operational, and then put in what you just said.
All right. And then, if you have things coming up, um, did, Michelle, did we get that, a copy of that out to the, all the commissioners on the deadlines?
No, but I was saying it later.
Okay, Michelle's gonna give you, so we've come up with deadlines, because we keep getting this 10th hour stuff that keeps coming to us, saying, "Hey, plug me in here," and that doesn't work, because we already got everybody else plugged in. And it's like today, you know, this last minute of trying to figure out this RFQ process, and so we had the time, and we plugged it in there, but that needs to stop, because it just kind of throws the whole idea of this grid off. But at the, the end of the packet today, the grid's in there, so if you just look at it, the 4th right now, we have 307 Horse Racing coming in to give us an update on, on what they've got going on, and then Michael Brown will be back in after that, but we still got a lot of open, open time on there, and then the same thing with the, with the 18th after that. So, and all we have is Wyoming Medical Center, Center of Foundation, the Natrona Collective Trust coming in that day for an update. So if you need things, get them in there, but try, we need to try and follow this guideline as far as when to have things. And then, Michelle, so that we don't, 'cause even today, I mean, we had a group come in here and said, "Hey, will you put this PowerPoint in?" Well, no, because we have to, we have to approve the PowerPoint, we gotta make sure it doesn't screw up the system, and there's a lot to it. So there's gonna be drop-dead dates, or drop-dead times, that that information has to be provided to us, or they're just not gonna be able to either use it, or they're gonna have to find another date to come in, so. So anyways, I just want everybody to be well-informed on that. And if you got stuff, holler at me if you wanna, or holler at Michelle if you wanna throw it on there. Okay, other than that, Sherman, did you have, I mean, if we don't need an exec session, that's fine.
It, it can wait.
Okay.
Or it would be pretty quick, and it's just an update.
Let's just do the exec that way, if we've got questions, it's handled.
Okay.
Right.
Yep, need a motion by?
Motion to make, do exec for, I don't know what purpose.
Um, legal advice.
Legal advice.
Sure.
Okay, so Commissioner Mellon's made a motion for an exec session, and it's been